Okay, the meeting will come to order. Uh, can I give you a brief warning?
My allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which is with its essence, one nation, united, indivisible, the great unity of this world.
Thank you and welcome all of you to our annual CELEI Huan Day. We appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Um, all board members are present except for Diane Beck, who is in Southern San Francisco. Um, and our first item on the agenda is review, revise, improve the agenda. Is there a motion? Move by Mrs. Sadler, is there a second, or is there a last? Is there discussion? All those in favor? Yes. Our next item is the approval of minutes for the regular meeting of October 14th, special meeting of October 27th, and special meeting of October 28th. Is there a motion to that, Diane? Move by the chairman, by the chairman, is there discussion? All those in favor? Yes. Alright, under visitors and correspondence, we'd like to have a moment of silence in memory of John Fisher, Missoula County Public School teacher, coach, and certainly friend and people there in CELEI. So if you can, please join me. Thank you. The correspondence is in your packet and is self-referenced. And our public comment tonight, we have Dave Seabees.
Hi. Just wanted to mention the Stand Up for Education organization is kicking on a new project. I have a website set up, so I'd like you to check that out. Has all good information and some more stuff from the Stand Up for Education Coalition in the future. And that website is www.standupmontana.org. But I'd say, I think there's some information there of funding issues. I appreciate your support in the past, when you rallied.
Thank you. The conference room is not good this tonight. Uh, so are there items from projects for staff? Would you please identify your...
Yeah, my name is Captain Smith, and I'm the flagship coordinator and targets assistance counselor for your programs and funding programs. Your design provides constructive activities and help on other programs. I have a book I use in my life and I also share with the kids that I work with. And most of both addresses individual responsibility for changing to accept and happiness as well as being smart. And I quote, "Our role has been worked too long in the condition else not to make waves. We don't want to make mistakes or disrupt the whole of things. As a result, we settle quietly and watch you off and see you evolve." I just like the flagship coordinator before me, and in the same circumstances, I'm using my book. A lot of my position affects me financially, as well as lots of professions that I've covered. But most importantly, I describe that my non-financial loss is beginning to be a conflict relationship. We want to bring time with me to cut the deal with the kid that turned up, as well as contacting with great teachers and other staff. I expect majority of them announcing more serious looks.
Are there items from trustees tonight?
Yes, I want to know if Carol Bellant has a pretty gold snake tag and I got a problem.
Has she liked the rest?
Oh, okay.
Are there sugar writers?
Um, I know we're deciding this in our personnel P and P meetings about how we're going to handle sharing information about conferences and whatnot that we go to, but I'm just real briefly going to say something. This is my first here's a trustee, and it was the third time I was able to go to Mcel, which is Montana... Hello, I just forgot.
Conference for educational leadership.
And I'm a firm believer in training, and there's so much to learn and so much to keep up with, especially where we are today with no child left behind and testing and all those implications. So I just value the training that I can get, so I feel very fortunate to have been able to attend. And some of the workshops that I attended, would be happy to share information with anybody that's interested, is I did one for superintendent board clerk relations. Um, I attended the MTSBA double A district caucus, and I was able to hear two keynote speakers, Clinton Bunn and Mosley White. And I also went to a session on missing links to improving academic, afternoon academics with Montana middle school students. It was just a nutrition and showing how to improve the nutrition for better achievement. Went to school law, went on issue district running out of gas, which is about district utility costs and ways to minimize them, and evaluating superintendents and principals, um, and then how to navigate the open meeting law. And then another thing about these conferences that I totally appreciate and am so thankful that I'm able to go for is the opportunity to network with other trustees from various districts around Montana, places I've never heard of. But anyway, so I just wanted to say thanks for being able to go. And also, real quickly, I was able to do two school visits this month, and so thanks to Mark Fane and the staff at Chief Shardle, as well as with the staff who is now full force. Thank you.
And then for items and trustees. Carol?
Well, I have the pleasure to be serving on a committee that Mr. Sadler's the chair of, which is looking at the nutrition policies for school nutrition. Uh, we're going to try and develop a district-wide policy to address school nutrition. And I'm also a parent of a second grader at Paxton Elementary School, and Paxton has, Paxton School has a nutrition advisory council. And this time, next Tuesday, so that's November 18th at 7:00 PM, Paxton School is hosting a talk on nutrition, its impact on child and adolescent learning behavior, growth, and wellness with two keynote speaker, speakers, Dr. Maxwell, who's an MD from the International Heart Institute at St. Patrick Hospital, and Dr. Blake Lee Brown from the University of Montana. And this is going to, this, this talk is going to address questions like, is it possible to promote healthy foods in our classrooms and parties? Are there nutritious fast foods? Is nutrition really important to children's wellness? And what's the connection between nutrition and learning? So I just wanted to invite everybody to attend. And if you have comments about school lunches or school nutrition, you can certainly direct them to Mr. Sadler, the chair of the committee that's looking at developing our policy. Thank you.
I'd prefer the call from Dave.
Zach? I want to thank the district council for allowing me to attend Mcel. It's a wonderful opportunity to, as Colleen said, to network with other trustees from around the state and to share ideas and concerns. And some of the workshops that I went to, one was presented by Jupi Sante from the Hamilton Public Schools, he's the superintendent there. It was on assessment and meaningful assessment, and so it was really, really helpful for myself as a teacher, but also just as how are we doing as a district to align what is happening in the classroom with standards? And so that was really interesting. I also participated in the open meeting law session, which was very informative, that was presented by Montana School Boards Association. And of course, the attendance for to increase public dialogue, public discourse, and a public participation in decision-making, and that is essential. And I also want to extend it to the staff. I, I mean, it's kind of a no-brainer, but I just believe so many of the decisions we make impact what's happening in the classroom in our schools, and we're, we're the people that I want to hear from when these decisions are coming forth. How do they affect you, and what can we do to help you and your students? So, anyway, that was another one. Um, there's one on early retirement incentives, and it says, was provided, just provided information about how you can provide your teaching staff with a very honorable retirement incentive or a retirement package. And so I was really interested in that, just because we do have, it has been brought up, it's been part of our budget discussion for a number of years, and so I was interested in that. If I have good information and other trustees would like to hear about it, because it is something we kind of bring up every, every few years. So, um, the other very important workshop was on community budget making, decision-making, community budget decision-making, where you really bring the community into the process. And a couple of things that I felt that we learned from this was to start with a zero-based budget, which is very cumbersome to do, but to start with essentially everything in the budget is on the table. And so you start with the zero and add back in those things that are most important to you. And of course, during budget times when our, when we really have significant cuts to make, then it seems to me we have to experience, to go back to, that's the most important thing to do in a, in a school, and that is we teach children, and so are most important assets in our schools, our teachers, and so we find those things personally, because we're building a budget on top of those things that are essential. So Laurel's School History has done this model budget building for the last couple of years, and they presented the program, their program to the Mcel because it was such a successful program for them. So, because they were faced with making some significant cuts this year. So I just thought it was very interesting and involved that other staff integral to this process, but also the community. And then the other thing was we gave, we got a report on the Montana Quality Education Coalition and the status of the lawsuit, and I think Dr. Clark just wants to speak to that. Tom Cotton was the director and presently, and he just says that it's real important we do get out to the community and talk about education, the needs of education, and that also there's a way for the community to be involved, and that is through an associate membership. If you really, if you do believe in education and believe that, we need to adequately fight it, then you can be part of the coalition as well by a membership of $10. It can be a, you can enroll your student in the process, you could enroll yourself, enroll your family, your business, and it's an associate membership, just saying that you're standing up for education, and that you believe that we, the state needs to go forward with fully funding adequate education. So, so those are a few of the things that I learned from this conference. And again, like Colleen said, it was a wonderful opportunity to network with our trustees and also with other trustees from around the state.
Do you have your other items from trustees? Moving on to reports, your health insurance trustee report is in your bag, which is the pretty golden consortium report. And tonight, we only have one student, Chris Davis, and that is Jamie Adams.
Okay. Red Ribbon Week was very eventful. We did pumpkin car meetings, and we had a multimedia presentation down at the grade school, which was very good. Um, volleyball season ended last Friday with the girls at divisionals. Um, their overall was 11 and 12, and at the end of the regular season, they were eight and eight. The girls made it fourth in districts. With no juniors on the varsity, we're looking for a very good season next year. Um, basketball practice starts next Monday, 17th. And student government, we started our food drive, which goes for the whole month of November, that's going to be distributed locally. The first basketball game is on December 5th and 6th for both boys and girls in Townsend Tournament. At Mr. Fisher's Memorial on the 3rd, CELEI was well represented by a bus of 40-plus kids and staff. That's about all.
Thank you. Uh, committee reports are also included in your packet and on our website, as well as at the Sixth Street Building. And now moving to instruction, Mrs. Wilson.
Yes, as I suggested to board throughout the course of the year, No Child Left Behind it adds up to the progress of defining my job this year. And which is good and interesting, and it's, it's good stuff, but I thought maybe tonight, actually, at 12:00, I thought that maybe in terms of helping people understand, No Child Left Behind it adds up to the progress of actually talking about this law, and how they did this last year, and how their numbers, and how that report played out in CELEI. CELEI was one of the schools in Missoula that was listed as not in the competitive progress. Unique in Canada, however, about the quality of education in CELEI as a result. To remember the board members that I talked to about the fact that essentially you get measured in 55 different possible areas. The truth is that CELEI, you don't get measured in 55 areas, because in order to get measured, you have to have 10 students in that group. CELEI has a graduating class usually of approximately 30 students, and so consequently, there are not very many subgroups that have 10 students in that. So CELEI usually is assessed on how the whole population is, on how the white population is, and then also on how their economically advantaged and their economically disadvantaged students do. If you took a look strictly at performance on the test last year, remember you had to have a 45 NCD, that was the number that you wouldn't have this far, and that translates to about 41% of the students reaching the level of participation. CELEI has 60 NCD for reading and 56 for math, so that, so the scores there are great. And the same is true for the white population, and their economically disadvantaged population has 54 and 50, so still scores well above what you'd be for concern. However, CELEI, as I said, didn't make adequate middle progress for two reasons. One, you're required to have a participation rate on the test of 95% of your students. When you have a class with 30 students, that means if two are absent, you don't make any. And so in a small school like CELEI, the political nature of the size of the school is going to cause fluctuation in making it, not making AYP, not because the quality of education is doing this, but because funny little things will really play in. So apparently, a couple of kids were absent. However, when I look at this data, there are two different numbers reported for the attendance rate, and I've actually called the Office of Public Instruction, because there's something that appears inconsistent to me in terms of the difference between the off students and white students, which essentially was the entire student population that came in that was tested. So it may be that they even didn't have more than two kids in the test, but at worst, it was more than two kids, two or more kids were not present on the testing day. Last year, we didn't have, the testing window included spring break, and so the number of opportunities that teachers had even to give makeup was significantly less. Um, and so realistically, that was really a difficult chart. This year, as we give the measured progress assessment, which is the test that will be used for this purpose, we do have a full two weeks to get all the kids tested. So we're hoping that in CELEI, as well as all the other schools, so remember, CELEI's not unique in that regard. That was more schools that didn't make AYP, didn't make because of the percentage of students tested. So that's, that was amazing. The other one, the other mark that CELEI was measured and didn't make was the graduation check. The state used a formula that was not divulged to us until June, after your graduates were finished. And what they're using now is a formula where they take the dropouts from the freshman year, plus the dropouts from the sophomore year, plus the dropouts from the junior year, plus the dropouts from the senior year, and subtract that from the whole population, and that makes fewer than 80% of graduates from the whole population, then we don't make it. Now, it's important to understand with that dropout, first off, if you have a graduating class with 30 kids, that means that over the course of four years in high school, we lose track of six, you don't make it. So in CELEI, again, you're much more likely to see fluctuation from one year to the next. In fact, I've already calculated next year's, 80% is the mark you have to have, CELEI at 77% last year, which means that six kids didn't make it in those four years. Next year's average for the class that just graduated was 90%. So, and I think that's what's going to happen with CELEI, is that because the numbers are so small, a couple of extra kids making a decision different than the year before will cause that fluctuation. So I think the board's going to need to be really sensitive to the smaller the school, the more likely that you'll see those kinds of fluctuations within the school. Let's see. And the other thing I think you need to understand is the drop, the definition of a dropout. If the child decides to go on to get a GPD, doesn't leave high school, but actually goes to college, we have students every year in this district that are enrolled in college when we count them as dropouts. But the state says, if you get a GPD instead of a high school diploma, you're a dropout. So when, when students make a decision to hurry the process, they'd rather just go down or play that, you need to understand that while that may be the very best decision for them, they do show up in the dropout statistics. And I can't tell you about specifically the six individuals that dropped out, but it may well be, in order to, then they have very healthy decisions to make. The other thing that might happen is if a student goes to another district and for some reason, we don't get that request for reference, if we don't ever get that request, then we assume that they never went back to school. And certainly, schools try to make good effort to make requests, but sometimes when families move from, particularly students move from one custodial parent to another, the parents on the other end of this have all the information that they need about where that school was and where they were. And so occasionally, a student counts as a dropout, just because there was no record of someone other than, and that's again, in a school the size of our, you know, the school's in town where there's 350 kids in a class, a couple of kids lost or something like that, it has an impact. Percentage-wise, it doesn't impact you like that kind of thing, like here at CELEI. So I just want you to know that the quality of education by the school in CELEI is just great. And that's exactly what we're talking about with, with No Child Left Behind, is that the report doesn't reflect all that we do, it reflects pieces of what we do. And it's good information for us to think about in terms of school improvement, but I think particularly when you take a look at its implications for a school of this size, you can see that, that CELEI is likely to be a school that'll make it one year, not make it the next, make it one year, not make it the next. And I don't want you to assume that the teachers are working hard one year, not the next. Okay? All right, so, thank you.
Thank you. I'm very excited. All right, moving on to finance, items A, B, C, and D are on the consent agenda. Item D, to authorize extension of lease and use agreement between the City of Missoula Park and Recreation Park and Missoula County Public Schools, the West Side Park. Is there a motion to that? Move by Ms. Sadler, second. Is there discussion?
I'd be very happy to. This is an opportunity that the district has in relation to what the City of Missoula community just approved on the aquatic miller, which has resounding, this is to replace a very old waiting pool, this part of it is to address a very old waiting pool just adjacent to Lowell School in Missoula, and currently we have a 10-year lease with the city. They asked us to extend that to a 40-year lease, which will be the life, the expected life of the new splash deck that will be put in there. A wonderful addition to the school, to the community. So we just wanted you to know that that was one of the things that our board was able to support our city in, as the city supported that through their vote to replace those pools, a number of them may be replaced. This is on our property, we lease it to the park and recs, to the city.
Are there any questions for the discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Yes. Okay, and item D, to approve the 2004-5 elementary and secondary budget calendar. Is there a motion to that? Move by Lance, second. Is there discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Yes. Okay, our next item, the building grounds and transportation, you're involved?
Good evening. I don't have much to say here. But I would like to say is that I have the dubious honor of times of looking across the district at all our buildings, at all our facilities, and being in that type of position is kind of great, as apropos for the education setting. Um, it's nice to see what's happening at CELEI. This building is excellent, it's standing tall. I think that Jerry Yelw and her staff, as well as the building staff and the district leaders, really deserve a real hearty round of applause, and that this building is one of the best moments.
Thank you, Mr. Bajer. Personnel reports on the consent agenda, and I will now leave the consent agenda. In the finance, we have approved claims, elementary and secondary, and authorized national special needs bus routes, elementary and secondary. In the personnel, we have the monthly personnel report. In the old business, we have approved second reading of selected policies from Series 3000, elementary, secondary. And in the new business, we have approved student discipline action, secondary, approved memorandums of agreement to reabors, moving ten campus school employees for out-of-district tuition charges for their children to attend school or MCTS, elementary, secondary, approved first reading of board policy, 7,000 rate tuition, which replaces board policy 5320 tuition free agendas for children of regular full-time, part-time district employees, elementary, secondary, and approved grant application for reteach all elementary, secondary. Okay, is there a motion to the seventh and the eighth agenda? Move by Carol, section 88, Sadler. All those in favor? Opposed? All right, and our next item is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, this is, this is Veterans Day today, and I just wanted to take a moment to thank all those who have served in our country, served for our country, and who are serving right now in arms of wait, to remember all of those of our loved ones and all those who may be close to us. So just, I actually remember this today, I know that Jim Satter sent it a sermon this morning. Thanks, Jim, for that. I don't know whether board members did or not, but appreciate the remembrance of this day. Our enrollment right now is about November 3rd, K-5 enrollment was 3,324. Our 6'8" enrollment was 1,758, for a total of 5,082 students, K-8. High school enrollment was 3,948, for a total K-12 of 9,030. Glad to say we are still holding up 9,000 this year. A breakdown of this information is included in the board packet. Our key communicators for the meeting is coming after lunch, and will be scheduled for Thursday, November 20th, at 12:00 in the Business Building Boardroom. Again, we welcome any board members that can be there, and any members of the public that would like to come down to Missoula for that meeting for key communicators on the 20th. The Montana Mont Cass, the Montana Concordance of Assessment System, which is the new criteria reference test that our students will be taking and starting this next spring, that Mrs. Wilson just referenced earlier. There's some sample items now available on the website, www.opi.state.mt.us/assessment/crt.html pound sign MP. Now, if you really want that... Now, if you really want that, call our office, we'll get that for you. It'll also be on our website, so you can find that. It'll be on the website, Lake, that's where, Lake, you can find that.
Yeah, I can read it from that.
Yes, we'll have it on our website. Our National School Boards Association Annual Conference will be coming up in March of 2004. Several trustees indicated interest in attending that national conference in Orlando. We do have funds, and we're sending two of our trustees and the superintendent to that conference. The upcoming events tonight, of course, our regular board meeting here in Sealy Swan. We hailed earlier, had a board visitation with the staff. Thank you for taking your time to come and do that and spend time with us, plus a tour of the building, and our board dinner at 5:00. Again, thanks to Trudy, who made the arrangements with Creative Pedigree American, the desserts were great, as was noted earlier. Most of us like that. Later this week, on Thursday evening, there will be a board training, that's at 7:00 P.M. on November 13th in the boardroom. This training will be presented by union officials, union personnel, and MPSPA legal counsel on grievances and on grievance hearings. We have a CNI committee work session on November 17th at the Business Building at 6:00 P.M. Moved by all board members, be there for that if you can. Building administrators will be sharing their goals and work for new strategies to reach new goals this coming school year, so 6:00 in the boardroom. On November 18th, the Nutrition Policy Development Committee is scheduled to meet from 7:00 to 9:00 in the Business Building Board Room on South Avenue. The following day, November 19th, is our PNNP committee meeting for the month, that's at noon, in the Sixth Street Administration Building, Room 14. I've already mentioned our communicators that following day, at noon. The board visitation to Hellgate High School will be on November 24th, and that is, the four board members scheduled to be there, Jim Satter, them, and Rogers. And Trudy, the time of that visit is... Is it noon, do we know?
It's, I want to say it's like 1:15 to 3:00. I'm not certain.
We will get that out.
Right. I'll make sure that I can.
We recommended that timing. Our F and O committee date has changed for November. It's Monday, November 24th, at 5:30 for a short meeting, and that'll be followed at 6:00 by our first board budget work session, and that's in the calendar that we approved earlier this evening. That'll be in the boardroom at the Business Building. Our Thanksgiving break is November 27th and 28th. There'll be no school that day for anyone, all offices are closed. The next board visitation for Jim Satter, Naomi DeMarinas, and Carol Bella, December 2nd, at Metal Hill Middle School, 8:30 to 11:00 A.M. Good amount of time to spend at school, to be able to see a number of things. The next board visitation for Colleen Weyers and Naomi DeMarinas is the scheduled board members, and of course, all of you are welcome with all of these, will be December 4th, 2:15 to 3:45 at Washington Middle School. And then our next monthly board meeting, December 9th, at the Business Building, at 7:00 P.M. I do have a couple of additions for your calendar, just to change of schedule. If you have the original scheduled, Franklin's board visit will be changed from Friday, December 12th, to Wednesday, December 10th, from 11:15 to 1:30. And then the signed trustees are Suzette Dill and David Merrill for that. Next week is American Education Week, and it's a very important time as we honor our educational system throughout America that day. Wednesday is a special day when we try to honor our classified staff. It's always a day that we tend to, it's always a group of people that we tend to forget about sometimes. Encourage all of you that are here that are parents and certified staff to thank our classified people, especially on that day. And then a new feature this year, on Friday, is an effort to recognize our substitutes that come into our building and take care of our kids when we're doing other things, either through illness or some other responsibility. So I also encourage you to thank our substitutes, especially on that day. And then for all the days, American Ed Week to honor our teachers, and we appreciate so much what you do for us and for the children in our schools and in our district. We appreciate that very much. So thank you for celebrating American education. Then earlier, Suzette mentioned to you the Montana Quality Education Coalition and the lawsuit that is currently filed. The court date is in January, I think it's January 20th, would be the court date, is it the right date? I think it is the 20th of January. And I've got a brochure, so I'd like each of you to take a look at it tonight, take a look at it. There is an interval open here, if you would like to become an associate member for that $10 fee, or more, if your family, if you want to put more in there. But they're really encouraging all people throughout Montana to let our coalition and let the legislature know that we believe that we need further support, better support through funding for schools in Montana. So if you would please each take one of these before you go tonight, if I can get at the door if you want, and if you just come and get one, we'll do it that way. So thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, our next item, under old business, item A, B are on the consent agenda. Another E business, item A, B and C are on the consent agenda. So we're to announce this. Does anyone have any announcements? If not, we use the church.
Madam Chair, I do have a question, but I would just like to raise. We arrived, I apologize if we arrived 20 minutes late and you passed the pump. I just have a question, when you have your board meetings in Missoula, what time do those meetings start?
Seven.
Seven o'clock. And I know that all the meetings here are scheduled to start at 6:00. Could you explain to me the difference in the meeting start time?
Well, I'm assuming that this is because everybody wants to get home early, assuming that was the case.
Exactly. It's always, it's always good to try and, you know, get people, because we come up early in the afternoon for the board visit, so it's always to try and get people back home. I understand that, and I appreciate that, but I would also have to just raise the issue with similar consideration each given to our board representative who lives here in Sealy Lake and travels from Missoula to Sealy Lake. It's the same distance from Sealy Lake to Missoula as it is from Missoula to Sealy Lake. And I myself am an inner and speech pathologist, so I have a lot of unshielded time. And I understand why you like to get home early, but for some of us to work right up to the last minute, we wind up being late at the meeting and miss a lot of it. So it was just a question that I had, and I need to raise it and ask for your consideration for possibly a time change.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, the meeting is adjourned.